On Wednesday, January 27th at 8:30 in City Hall Council Chambers, we'd like to start out with our invocation by Pastor H. Clark Edwards of First United Methodist Church. Please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this another day. Thank you for the evening's rest. We give thanks for this city council meeting and pray for your wisdom in the decisions made by this council. We continue to pray for this wonderful community and we pray for healing among all people who have suffered from the virus that has taken the lives of so many people around the globe. We continue to pray for your peace among all people. In your holy name we pray. And Lord, go Bucks. Amen.
Join us in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and the city council chambers is open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at this meeting under public comment. And at this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. Ms. Bochamp?
We have no proclamations this morning. However, we do have a presentation from Janine Amick at the Performing Arts Center. She's going to give us an update.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you. So, I believe, yes, so council people and mayor and newly seating people, Ms. Jane and Ms. Pam, welcome. Mr. Patrick, it's always wonderful to see you in this morning. Ms. Mary Ann, I'm super excited to share with you what has been going on at Manatee Performing Arts Center. So hopefully, it's a lot of information, as condensed as we can, to get excited that the arts are still alive, culture is thriving as well as it can in Manatee and in the city of Bradenton. Yeah, you guys are seeing it. Okay. So Florida Cultural Group, Inc., this past May, our corporation name, The Manatee Players, Inc., changed. There was multiple reasons for that, and many of them had to do with our growth in the downtown area of the city of Bradenton. And we noticed that it started to get confusing for people. You may not be aware that we started providing box office services for the Crosley Theater, as well as the Anna Marie Island Community Center. And when we were selling tickets, they would go to the Manatee Performing Arts Center website. So sometimes they'd end up in the wrong venue on that particular night and then have to drive either down to the Crosley or out to the island. As well as, Manatee Players is still a wonderful resident troupe thriving at the Manatee Performing Arts Center. But so are a lot of other traveling troops now coming to the Performing Arts Center to use our space. So we wanted to make sure that each artist has their proper due, so that when we are actually booking them, as well as giving them credit for their performances, we're giving the right people the right credit. What's been keeping us busy during COVID? Because we are open for business in a very limited way. We have, since March, been providing the community with concerts, films, musicals, classes, rentals, forums, dramas, and meetings. We've been gathering in quite a few places, at the Manatee Performing Arts Center in Stone Hall, in the lot, which is our parking lot across the street. Without the help of the city of Bradenton, that parking lot would not have come to fruition. And now, we are so excited to be using it as an outdoor venue for our community to gather in a very safe environment. We're also now online with Vimeo, YouTube, Facebook, Zoom. We have our own Vimeo channel where we're streaming our performances from inside the theater right into your home. And so that's exciting, as well as into Freedom Village and some of our other assisted living facilities in Sarasota for residents who cannot leave. Partners, this would not be possible without the partners this past year of Realized Bradenton, who helped us experiment with our outdoor scenic environment. Bradenton Tourist Development Council, who helped us with providing access to movies outdoor, both here on our campus, premier sports on Manatee River, you might have known, and out on the island, and many others. So we had a beautiful little video for you to show you how we're cleaning, but it doesn't work. So we'll get that sent to you. We tried. Since March and the pandemic started, we have had an opportunity for citizens to gather safely a total of 112 times. That's both inside and outside, not including the number of times you could watch it. How many people? These are not inflated. We double counted. 937 individuals. We've sold or have reserved 304 spots. That means either a parking spot or a circle on a field. We've streamed more than 346 links to people's homes throughout the U.S. And we've still been able to engage 72 individual volunteers who have helped us put on these performances, as well as park cars, whatever's necessary, answer phones. What have we lost? I know that might be important to you. What's going on? We have lost four full-time employee positions. Two of them have been furloughed, two of them have been removed to, down to part-time. We've lost five part-time employees. You can imagine, as we are open limited, no longer do we have concessions. No longer do we need the extra box office help at the night. Innumerable volunteers have lost the opportunity to perform on our stage. Kiwanis Hall Rentals, gathering people for nonprofit organizations, has come to a halt. We're now down to 28% capacity of Stone Hall. As we bring in people, we're only sitting 99 people out of the 352 that is available. We've lost 100% access to Kiwanis Theater. The space is just too small to gather people safely right now under CDC guidelines. We've lost a total of 89.6% in earned revenue, which is a total of $1.17 million since March 2020. So what do we plan to do? Well, like all theater, we plan to stay the course. We're going to persevere, and how? We're continuing our momentum downtown. So some things just coming up. This weekend is our closing weekend of nonsense. So you can either see it live inside the theater, outside Friday or Saturday night at a drive-in movie, or you can see it from your home. In February, we've got a great weekend lineup, both inside and outside of the facility, called Love and Review. It's just some of our local best voices coming together to provide live entertainment, all surrounded around joy, love, and the Valentine season. February 28th, Soul Sensations, in honor of the Black History Month, will be coming and doing a concert outside, followed up by a talk from Henry Lawrence about his career in football, and then the movie, as the sun goes down, Remember the Titans. All free to the community on February 28th. Other things that we're doing, those are short-term. We hope to open I Do I Do on May 6th. It's a wonderful Broadway musical. It's a husband and wife team, so we don't have to worry about social distancing. So that's our short-term. Long-term, you may remember this building. This is the old GTE Building, the Peninsula Building, about four blocks away. We're in the process right now of working to buy that from Manatee County Government. And the history of the building, it was built in 1925. Hey, I've got stuff on my screen, you guys don't. Okay. I'll give you my slides, Ms. Tamara. Okay, so it was built in 1925. It was a telephone company, all right? The Manatee County bought it in 1991, and it's currently being used for record storage. Our, oh, that's why. When technology is smarter than you.
That was Mr. Gallo's first job, right?
Yeah.
Working there?
Use and purpose. The primary focus is performing and technical arts education. The secondary focus is performance-based rehearsal space. Tertiary is technical hands-on training. Right now, we're very proud to say we've got a new college senior who is interning with us in our costume department. And then additional, addition space. One of our great partners that we're finalizing with now is the Straz. If you're not familiar with the Straz Education, it's world-class, especially in ballet and in tap. And so their teachers will actually use this as an annex building to provide classes here in the downtown Bradenton Core. These are the names of the classes. Other things that we're going to add to our lineup is the sound mixing, which would be new, vocal recording, and voiceover, which is definitely becoming big in the business. Classes will be available. This is the first floor, just to give you some insight of what we're looking at. Something unique about this building is we are adding on the first floor private rehearsal rooms with glass doors. We've noticed that in the last 10 to 15 years, private lessons have reduced in people's homes. Parents just don't feel as comfortable as they once did in dropping off their student to take voice lessons or piano lessons. So we will provide access for teachers to now, at a very nominal fee, reserve space and have all of their students come and take lessons. Second floor has three smaller studio rooms. Third floor has two big rehearsal rooms for musical theater and of the like. Additional newsworthy information, we're about to make a parking lot upgrade, thankfully, to the night COVID fund. They're providing us with monies to be able to put in outdoor little, well, not so little, but outdoor speakers, so that instead of bringing everything in and out during our performances and that the sound can be properly balanced throughout the parking lot for our outdoor events. We believe in the industry and what we've seen, that this isn't going away right away. And even if it did, some people's comfort levels won't come back for about two years. So it is in our schedule for the next two years to continue to provide access to live entertainment or gathering for films outside in the parking lot for at least the next two years. We have and we are in discussions and in negotiations with Hillsborough County. You may not be aware that they are actually building a performing arts center in New Tampa on Bruce B. Downs. And they have asked us to manage and operate the new performing arts center. So we're extremely blessed to have them reach out to us, especially with all of the great arts in Manatee County. But they loved our layout and how diverse we are in providing different types of opportunities for people to use our space, and they want to replicate it there. BoxOfficeCentral.com is a new business plan that we are looking into. As we have noticed, that a lot of people have reduced their staff, but they still want to do events, but they don't have the software necessary to be able to sell tickets. That we have secured BoxOfficeCentral.com so that people can go, almost like a local Ticketmaster, but it also provides human beings to work the days of your event at the doors to help you with your events. We're looking at booking right now a comedy festival this fall in 2021, a film festival in spring of 2022, and event space, possibly another annex in Palmetto. And the last thing I wanted to share with you that we're excited about is, hopefully you can see, this is a bronze 12-foot-tall inlay that will be, has already been commissioned and will be installed in about six months' time. And we hope that in six months' time, this is called the performer, as you can see. And it's important to us to actually have it placed and put up in a prominent, it's one of those types of artworks that you would, the gentleman with the guitar is full life-size. So you could almost stand right next to him in the theater itself and take a picture. But it also wants, we wanted to show our dedication to every performer for the last two years, a year and a half, who have been out of work, who have been passionately waiting aside to be able to come back, who have also dedicated themselves to doing whatever they can to make sure that they're still honing their craft. I know that was a lot of information, but I wanted to give you guys an update to let you know and to say thank you. I don't come here often enough to say thank you. We're over there as busy as we can be. We hope that you know how much we appreciate the city of Bradenton and how they have embraced us growing the Performing Arts Center and just trying to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to bring people together safely right now. Any questions?
Questions?
Just a comment?
Yes.
Wow. You're such a jewel in our crown here, and thank you for making so much out of the lemons. We, I mean, what great lemonade. It's exciting.
It takes a real team effort, and we're thankful for everybody.
And we were, I took, my wife and I took our grandchildren to the first show in the parking lot there, which was a time that you needed, the kids needed to see something and get out, and it was your great man Charlie Brown. So it was an adventure, and I know a learning experience for you, but it was well worth what we saw and how the next step went and gone. So we appreciate all that you do for our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So hopefully, we'll see you guys at the theater.
Yes. All right, we're at the point of citizen comments, and citizen comments will be accepted at this time on any non-agenda item. Comments will be accepted on the public hearing and agenda items at the appropriate time. So at this time, I'd like to call up Betty Sales Rhodes. You have three minutes.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to talk about the Braden and Housen Authority.
Could you please state your name and your address?
Oh, okay.
Yep, I know you, but we've got everybody else.
Okay, my name is Betty Sales Rhodes, 1007 26th Street East. Okay, one thing I need to let you all know. Our lives begin to end the day we became silent about things that matter. And when something matters to me, I have to say something about it. And I'm talking about the housing project down East Sugg and Page Project, where you have Mitchell, who is the authority over the project, in which I think that things is not going right there. A lot, I was out to eating two weeks ago, and I overheard a conversation with some ladies was talking, and they saying that at that project, that if something happened in the project, they have to pay to have it done. They have stickers on their cars and their cars be moved. If anyone ever went down east, there's nowhere to park. Over by Avondale Way, Oatmeal Way, that's the one way coming in and one way going out. So you have to park along the side, so I guess their cars are getting moved, but it's a sticker, and they have to pay money to get that car back. Okay, and I was reading last year, the HUD had came in because there was too many complaints against Mitchell, and they recommended several things for him to do, and he haven't did it yet. And one thing, if y'all know, is a turnover rate there, and that's the project to help low-income people that live with their families, which they get evicted out. I guess he's saying either his way or the highway, and that's wrong for him to say. And I need, I know that Pam's section, somebody need to look into that situation because it is terrible down there. And you hear residents saying things about it. And I guess when they used to have the hearing office, when you know you could do a complaint and you hear, but he'd be on task. So what HUD amended to them, he have no way to be on the hearing panel with them when they have a complaint and everything. And then the board there, you know, I think Mayor Brown should look at it because I know it's a volunteer board. But I remember reading, because I do my research, that this man had got paid $1,000 for overtime, and the Braden and Housen Authority told the board to make him repay that money. They say it was a bonus, and that's wrong, if he didn't supposed to get it. And I know the mayor is the one who appoint the people to that housing authority. And Mayor Brown, I would like for you to look into that because somebody's not doing their job there. You know, helping these people. Because, you know, I'm saying, I never lived in the project, but I have friends that did years ago when I was going to school, and they should be treated as people too. Don't worry about the scandal that went on years ago, but one of your former thing, you're supposed to run the project as it's supposed to be run, not for you to be just hicked to everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carl, just a little response.
Just a little update on what we've done. We've asked Mr. Mitchell to come in here and talk to the city council about the Housing Authority, what's going to be going on with the Housing Authority. I know that all the council has got the minutes from the last meeting available to them to, and also potentially responses to the HUD work. It's, you know, we do appoint that board certainly. And there are means of removing boards in, for various reasons, but it is very difficult. You can do it, but it's a very public difficult process. You just don't say why it wants to marry anymore. So there's a lot of things in process. I think the first step is to have a meeting with Ellis. We've also talked about a joint meeting between this council and the board of the Housing Authority to try to get on the same page as to what's going on and what can be done to hopefully take care of what we hear, you know, obviously we have an experience to, but what we hear. So that's worth moving forward with that, and hopefully that will help something, you know, somewhere along.
Right, it's very important to all of us up here, as well as the community, to continue moving that forward. So the process has started for that. So thank you. Next, Glenn Gibellina. And don't forget to, just in case you're not used to doing this, state your name and address. I'm kidding.
For the record, Glenn Gibellina, 710-28th Street East. I want to talk about three things today, 920 surplus property and breach of contract. Here's an article from Dennis Maylie on the 920. This was a rushed job. The building's not even knocked down and you're negotiating contracts. There weren't the proper documentations there that they, Scott didn't step up to the plate and say, you know what, you can't go through this, you're violating the sunshine laws. That never happened. That item needs to be pulled back, and the new commissioners need a thorough workshop on that. Second thing I want to talk about is Florida statutes. Every three years, this municipality is required by the state to bring forward their surplus property to the community, and the community decides what should be done with it. You haven't done it. Carl hasn't done it in 13 years. He should have had five meetings by now. He's an habitual offender.
Mr. Gibellina, I'm going to stop you right there. Do not point out individual staff members, just talk about what you want to talk about, and then we'll move forward from there.
Okay, so, all right, so the statutes have been violated consistently for 13 years. The most egregious one is breach of contract. Mr. Copeland had an agreement with Pastor Sykes and myself, a fellow complaint about a derelict building. It's been there for 20 years. And Mr. Volker came out, secured a demo company, and we were good to go. All of a sudden, Mr. Callahan writes a letter and said, oh, listen, we're going to reneg on that deal because we don't feel we have to honor it because I sent my building official out there, and he thinks it's not that bad. Well, the deal is a deal. You had a contract with Mr. Copeland. You defunded that, and here's what your building official says. Told me that, in his professional opinion, the structure while having blighted impact for a building that should have been done 20 years ago for a guy that can't afford it, on his opinion, which by the way, I did a records request for his report. He doesn't have one. He's not a structural engineer. He's not a licensed contractor. Absolutely fraud. You need to fix this, Pam. It's in your district. There are other folks here going to talk about it. This is an injustice, a breach of contract, and it's unacceptable that you treat a citizen who's been paying for decades property taxes, and you came to the agreement and said, we're going to help you out. It's 50 feet from a daycare center. But according to the building department, blighted's okay.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan?
Certainly, I don't have a problem responding to that. Would like to certainly say, as I discussed with some things yesterday and previous council meetings on the surplus properties, we do have the entire book, we showed the entire book, a list of properties, and we still do have, need to have the meeting. I also had indicated during those meetings that we have not done that and that we would be moving forward with that. But also, if you read what he put up there, it is not entirely true that the people will decide what to do with that property. It's your decision what you do with that property. Because if you read it very closely, it says the city may dispose of those properties. That they have to. It says they may. So, and then what if you do, once you declare them surplus, how you utilize those funds is what the statute says. So that's just clarification. Certainly, on the Copeland house issue, we did, if you want to listen to the tape, we brought the tape just in case. But what council agreed then was to work, try to work with the Copelands to see if we could work out something on demoing that property. No agreement was made, no contract had been formed, no decision had been made by city council in a formal decision. What we did do is Volker reached out to the Copelands. We did try to go out for bids on the property to see if a demo companies, we got two. One was selected. And this was all through my discussions with Volker, Mr. Reese, that we went through that process, started talking to them about the demo. At that point in time, we had, there was some sort of understanding that potentially they could do the demo. And if the Copelands wanted to do the demo, there's no reason for the city to step in and do the demo. That was, that was the understanding. As of around Christmas time, that was still the understanding. The contractor was going to reach out and had been scheduled to come out to that particular property. And then it was understanding as of right before Christmas that the Copelands were going to pay for that. And whether that was what, whether they could or not, that was just the understanding that I had. And then, day before yesterday, we got a call from the contractor that said he met out there with them and that they could not afford to pay for it. That was the last. That was the complete change that we had as of last week. What I'm asking council if they want to do, they can proceed forward if they are. But I want everybody to understand, there is no contract, there was no agreement, there was discussions about working with them to see if we could get that property demoed. I had the building official, we didn't have a building official for the longest time, had the building official go out and take a look at the property. It is very blighted. Blighted is not a reason for demoing a property necessarily. We would be demoing properties all over town. Unsafe structures are reasons that you could. But when we were in this meeting, Mr. Rudis also warned us about making sure you have all of your bases covered when you actually demo a property. And one of the things that's going to be bad about this, if we go forward and demo the property, that property will remain vacant most likely for a long period of time because we will not forgive that lien, because that's when we spend our money. That's the difference between CDBG. When we start spending our own money on these things, we generally expect that we're going to get the money back by having that lien on that property. CDBG funds are different, different programs, different reasons and scenarios why you would maybe waive a lien in the future. So that may tie the property up as opposed to the homeowner being able to do it. We are still in the same position that we were now with change of information as of Monday, I guess, how we would like to proceed. We're still willing to work with the Copelands. We're not going to work with Mr. Gibellini. We're not going to work with the church. We worked with the property owner because that's where we have to have all the approvals in place. So from my discussions with Volker, Ms. Copeland has been very easy to work with, very helpful in those communications, and we were trying to figure out how to work this out. So I take offense to Glenn's comments about me. He continues to do that on every issue, and I will, from this point on, start responding to him. There was no letter to him. Point blank, no letter. I don't know where he comes up with this stuff at.
All right, Mr. Callahan, there's also something, he showed at first an article in the newspaper. I don't know if you call it a newspaper, but the Braden and Times that I think has a lot of inaccuracies in, that there was no, and maybe Mr. Rudisell needs to answer that, there was no inaccuracies or in proprieties in our meeting schedules and things. And everything was noticed properly and done correctly, from what we've been told by our legal. In his first comment?
Yeah, I'm not sure I saw the comments.
Well, he put it up on the screen.
If we're referencing the meeting on the nine twenty, yes, that it was a properly noticed meeting. City council can consider any business that comes before it on a properly noticed meeting, unless there's some statutory requirement for additional notice, which in that case there's not.
Right, and it's important to me, as coming in as the new mayor and the executive branch of this government, to make sure that we are doing things correctly, and my eight years on, or seven and a half years on the council, it was done correctly, and it's still going to continue to be done directly, correctly. And the important thing is that we put out the facts, not propaganda, and I don't believe, I did not receive a call, normally when there's some information that goes out, the media would call you to confirm that information. I did not receive a call from any news medias about that, and I don't believe any of our staff or council did either. So the most important thing to me, Mr. Gibellina, is that if there is something wrong, we need to figure it out. But if there's not something wrong, we don't need to do propaganda out there, and that's going to be important as me starting this administration through the mayor's office, that we get the true facts out there. That's the only way we're going to be able to serve the citizens correctly, is the true facts. And sometimes there is a little bit of gray area, if it's a one-on-one conversation, but when there's tapes of things and other things, videos, and their staff is doing it right, we need to commend them for doing it right, not criticize them for what we think. So it's going to be important to keep the true information out there to me.
Just on the record, we did discuss it yesterday for workshop purposes, but I want everybody to know that's here in the audience, if they, if they started to believe what they had heard, I want to make sure everybody completely understands what went on. One week before the meeting, one week before January meeting, I sent out a copy of the development agreement to council saying, here is the agreement, please review it. In that notes, it also said, it didn't say if you have any questions, it said, please get with me so we can go through this in detail. We did that. At the same point in time, this was going through conflict attorney to be able to review the agreement, so that was a week before. On Friday, I got the notice back from conflict attorney that we would probably want to consider whether the land use restriction was in our contract, if it wasn't already in the county contract. I said it was already addressed in the county contract to her, she sent back and said that is absolutely fine then. I went to Tamara and said, everything, there are no changes with the contract, there are no revisions to the contract, there's no nothing with that. And as a, as a additional information, it said, please include the Manatee County agreement, because that is the reference point to land use restriction. We included that on Monday morning at eight forty-seven, that went out to council to be able to review the county agreement, with the sole purpose of indicating in that county agreement that there was a land use restriction in the county agreement, and that we would be able to enforce that in our city contract, because that was language in our city contract if we decided to go forward. I think that what was said in the meeting, that it shouldn't go forward, it was a properly noticed meeting, properly noticed information. On the agenda, that it goes out to the public sometimes, in a lot of instances, there is not information that can be put there for various reasons, but it also restricts that there is information there, shows there's information there, and if you want it, please contact clerk's office, you can get it in that form. So there was nothing about that agreement, that meeting, that could ever be considered illegal, not properly noticed, and not subject for you guys to be able to make a movement on it. People may not like decisions you make, but that's not the reason for saying that it's an illegal meeting, or not, or none of those. So I want to clear the record on that, I'm very comfortable with that. Staff does a great job trying to get that information out. Supplemental information may always come out, more information is better. And for that reason, we were, I felt like the staff did a great job getting that, getting that to everybody.
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman Barnaby.
Mr. Callahan or Ms. Beauchamp, could you speak to the issue that we're having to try to make everything ADA compliant, and the fact that we're in a lawsuit about that?
We're not currently in a lawsuit, but you are subject to ADA provisions, and you always have to make sure that you, you try to comply as best you can, as federal statute as opposed to state statute. Certain documents are very difficult to make that way. Pictures, you have to describe a picture. Big, huge maps that we get in in planning, you can't reproduce those, those, you know, so what we have to do-
We can't reproduce those over the internet.
What we do is, yes, on the website, it can. We can reproduce those and send them to anybody, that is fine, with that request. So that's why we say, upon request, please get with us, and we will send you whatever documentation you need, either hard copies, or copies that would come in via a different, or different format, through email. So sometimes it's difficult, we try our best, we have to make sure everything gets converted as best we can, but if you look back at our history, I look back at a lot of different meetings over the last couple of years. There are some things that are included, some things are not, but there is an agenda memo that indicated there was additional information, all you had to do was ask for it.
Thank you, and I just want to make one final, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Coachman.
Two things. That statement about upon request, maybe we need to write it in bolder letters and highlight it, I don't know, for it to get enough attention, because it might look like the fine print, but that's just-
No, we're aware of that, we're aware of that.
That's just a comment.
We're going to adjust that, because we're going to adjust it to put it on each individual item instead of the general header, that if there's something that you can request it, if it's that particular item.
Yeah, I think that's probably what was missed. And secondly, and I, being new, not sure how, sure how this goes, but there was a citizen comment, and there was something in the comment that I would like to ask, if it's something that could go to the CRA to help, I, but you know, my newbie.
Sure, sure, CRA obviously is a different board, so-
Right, I know.
That would be something that, when you have your CRA meeting, your chairman can probably get comments on that. So that would be a good, obviously, we can't discuss-
I know, I know.
-up here, right.
Okay.
All right, perfect.
So that's it, just from that perspective.
Yes, sir.
Carl, do we, as a form of precedent, I know we've done some demos in the past where they were like falling down, that it was emergency order, it was bank-owned properties we threw the liens on. Have, have we been in the business of tearing down properties for an individual? Is this, is this a regular thing?
I don't, no, it's not a regular thing. It is, it is not a regular thing. We may have in the past, I don't know for certain on all of them, a lot of times we have bought properties that we tore down, especially the CCRA, bought a lot of properties that they then tore down, and those are the properties that we have a lot of surplus spots on, because they were problem houses, not so much they had dilapidated, they may have been bad houses for other reasons.
Well, and I know after the Great Recession, two thousand and eight, nine, ten, that the banks were falling down on their duties, and we did have to have an emergency program with the banks, but we, you know, we were almost doing that like condemnation, you know, so-
And that's why we signed on with the Whitner Group, the law group, to take those problem properties that were either bank-owned, abandoned, to see what we could do with those to force some of those kind of things, but-
Well, and on that note too, if we were to follow through on this, would we not be setting a precedent, and would we have other people coming forward?
I don't know that many, there's not a ton of people who are going to voluntarily want a lien on their property, that are going to want their house torn down, because what I'd like to look at is, I'd really like to take a look at this property with Vicki and see if it's suitable for CDGB financing, to be able to fix it back up and make it a productive house, rather than just automatically demoing it. But that will take a review, we can have Vicki or a contractor out there and take a look at that, to see if it's subject to saving, as opposed to just demoing. So we're, we will work with the Copelands to figure out what the best solution is for that. If it, if it indeed ends up that it needs, and absolutely needs to be torn down, I don't have a problem making that happen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible for-
Well, yeah, we'll go in the, we've got a protocol here, so we'll figure that, I saw it, so we'll ask for that. Just my final comment before you sit down, Mr. Callahan, is that I think when you look at this dice now, there's a lot of, a long time people in this community that have been involved, not saying our age, for some of us, but we, and some of our new people, but we care, we're going to listen, but we're also going to speak in truce and get the correct information out there, that's very important, I think, as we went through our workshop yesterday, three and a half hour workshop, so it wasn't something just short and not thought about, but we are going to work forward to help the community, but we also are going to speak in truce and facts, and we're going to get them out there. The propaganda has got to not be out there from the standpoint of just saying it to say it. So I appreciate, you know, obviously citizen comment's going to be very welcomed, but we're also going to work with the citizens to make it better, but also have the facts, so then you can make an informed decision as well. So I appreciate that, Mr. Callahan. We have one more card, and then I'll go to the audience to see if there's a speak, but Pastor James Sykes, and you had filled out a hearing card, but you meant to be citizen comment, I'm assuming, yes, okay, that's fine, so we changed it. Yes, whatever's easiest for you. And just please remember, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Pastor James D. Sykes, senior, of the Ward Temple M.E. Church, that's one thousand and five Fifth Street West here in Bradenton, Florida. I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to be able to hear me this morning. It feels like I'm in, I'm caught up in the middle. Mr. Copeland and I, we work very well together. I think we want the same thing. There's the building, and it's behind our churches, about fifty feet maybe from our daycare. We would like to be able to put some other stuff there, I know it's been a while. Matter of fact, Mr. Copeland's mother was attending our church, you know, and that's why she had it back then, she did a lot to help us during that time. My concern is that we all want, I've been here about two and a half years, and we're trying to clean the community up, and it seems like, and I saw, but Mr. Copeland is doing a great job trying to work with us, as well as others in the community. We have duplexes behind the church, we just put fifty thousand dollars, the roofs on them, we're cleaning up a lot of the property around there, so we feel as though that would be a, if we can get it, I could work with Mr. Copeland, I mean, if we take money to work with him, pause the lien, Mr. Callahan, maybe we can work together on that to try to make a children after-school program in a building like that, so, yeah, to benefit us, it wasn't torn down, but if it is, there are varmints, they are big, some of the biggest parts, and the electrical has been torn out, the plumbing has been torn out, and we just want everybody to be safe. We're not even trying to cause any problems, but we would love to have the building if we can, work in and when I can to make things work. So I'm just here to let you know, I'm in favor, if it's demolished, that's fine, if not, if we can use it, we're doing it that way. So we're just, we're just here to make the community a better place.
Thank you.
Any questions? You done?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, sir. God bless you.
All right, any other comments? I think the young lady here wanted to speak first. And just remember, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Marion Copeland. I'm here to speak in behalf of my husband Spencer Copeland, and myself, and I've listened to this all this morning, but I'm here today for the concern of what we're facing with this process of this demolition of when we were first contacted concerning the home unoccupied, and there's always protocol, procedure and all, and we've gone through that with, like Austin, the code of enforcement, then end up with the level of Mr. Volker, but prior before that, it was, I can't pronounce his name, Jesuit, J-
Jesus.
Jesus, that's his name? Oh, okay, never met him or anything, but anyway, trying to find, when we first got a letter, and you know what, through us, we've never been through this or anything, and getting a letter from the city, if you ever decide to tear it down, the city has funds to offset the cost. Oh, this is written from the city to us, and just trying to follow as to what steps, and we went through even that guy who she's just spoke of, and he said, that you don't have to worry about going to three or four people, I will be your contact. Never met any of these people, other than Austin, who was the code enforcement in that area. And he said, I'll get back with you two or three weeks. Nothing heard from him, being patient, and I called back, and he no longer works here. He left. It's just been one thing after another, but we got down to, finally I got down to Volker, and he's been very nice to work with. I can work with anybody. You know, trying to do what we need done, and it's all about, you know, it needs to be demolished, we've been out of there since seventy-something, we're trying to keep it in the family, we have kids, and hopefully, we'll be able to pass it on to them. But the thing is, we receive calls, people have stole, we tried to rent it out to keep it up, people would steal the refrigerator, the stove, those type of things. We had a storm here in Bradenton ten years ago, eight years ago or something, we boarded up the windows, we got a call, someone has stolen the window coverings, we replaced them, all sorts of things up there, people dropped, I know it's time now, you did-
Yeah, time, time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. I think one of the things that, I'll just say too, I think we kind of get the point where we're at, and I know that, you know, to move to the next step would be to get our CDBG to look at it, figure out where we're going from there, and then get a fast response back to you. Obviously, that's something my whole time being involved in government, fast is different, but we will, that's something that we will continue on, so I don't know, Mrs. Barnaby, did you have a comment?
We're patient, but we've tried, we've tried to work with getting someone to, where we could get it done, and Mr. Volker was working with finding two, two companies.
Yes, yeah, we got that, so we'll, we'll go forward, and let me get Councilwoman Barnaby to speak.
Okay, we need someone to-
Thank you, we'll follow through. Thank you for your comments, and it is important to us, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Copeland for, for being here today. I found it fascinating that we had individuals that didn't own the property trying to tell us what to do with your property. I personally found that a little disrespectful, so I'm very grateful that in this difficult time of having public meetings, you all care enough to come down and be with us, and I want to thank you for that.
We'll move forward, Mr. Roth?
Yeah. Ma'am, you said that you have a letter from Jesus Nino?
This is from the city. We have two letters here, and even how like, they sent pictures and all of that, and all this.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe we could get a copy of that, just, I'm sure we have it in file, Mr. Callahan probably has it, or-
Jesus is filed there.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get that, if you can give to our clerk there, and we can get a copy of it for you.
So Jesus, under him?
Yeah, in the, yeah, in the CRAs, right.
See, I didn't know.
Yeah, so, yeah, but that, and that's understandable, so, all right.
He took another job.
Yeah, he's just got a, moved up in a position, so that's good with another city.
Well, Carl, I was going to ask a question, I mean, did he, did Jesus have, it sounds like he committed us, and, did he have the authority to do that? I mean, we may, we may be committed at this point.
No, he didn't, he doesn't, he doesn't have the authority to commit city funds, so, I mean, that's, that's part of the deal, is the CCRA, generally, what they've done is they've torn down houses, or bought houses to tear them down. I'm not sure that, we have the demo funds are in the building department, where we established funds with, under the building department for demos, for emergency demos or things that had to happen because of health, safety, welfare, it wouldn't have been, and we didn't have demo funds necessarily in the CCRA. That would have taken action of the board.
That's what I would have assumed, that I'm concerned, that's, I'd like to see a copy of that letter when it comes in.
So definitely going forward, we're going to get it all straightened out, and then again, get the facts, that's all we want, that's what you want, and that's what everybody wants, so, right, yep. Councilwoman Coachman?
Yeah, I just want to say, Mr. and Mrs. Copeland, you see a new council up here. And thank you for bringing that. And as Mayor Brown said, once we get all the facts, even though government can move slowly, we're going to move as fast as we can.
No patience, no patience.
I know you are. Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the audience want to have a public comment? Mr. Jones? Obviously, please state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Rodney Jones, 213 Sixteenth Avenue West. I'd like to touch on a couple issues. I'd like to kind of counter what Ms. Barnaby, Councilwoman, and how you doing, Marion? I want to kind of counter, I'm glad that Glenn's in the community. He spends a lot of time in the black community. He spends a lot of time in the area, spends a lot of time in the churches, working with the neighborhood, educating them on a lot of things that we didn't know about construction and affordable housing. So I want to thank you, Glenn, for what you are doing in the neighborhood. And he has a quite a relationship with Pastor Sykes, and I believe the Copelands as well. Also, I want to thank him for that. ADA accommodations, Marion, I'm glad you brought that up. Because on the day I got arrested, Mayor posted, made a comment that I was late. I was late because there were no ADA accommodations in any other construction site. I did a public records request, and it's required by Florida statute that they do that. And there were no ADA accommodations out there. People were walking in the street. There were all kinds of trip hazards. I'm actually legally blind, I'm just determined. And it was a real bad deal out there, and the city did not have what they were supposed to statutorily have in place. It was not in place, and I worked to try to get the records, and they don't exist. So there are a lot of problems with ADA. And I'm definitely going to bring that up when I come to see you guys about that litigation for that arrest. That's going to be one of the issues. Also, I think there's some termite issues over under that house. From what I understand, the joists are gone, it's completely rotted out underneath. So somebody probably needs to climb up under the house, like Mr. Jim Belina did, to actually look in that house. As it relates to the Bradenton Housing Authority, we've been trying for two years to not to work with Mr. Mitchell, but to get rid of him. He has a 400% turnover rate in staff, 400%. That board is a typical public board. They're not that seasoned on how they should run boards, and so they basically let him get away with nothing. The residents now, and you can ask your police department, have now resulted to calling the police on Mr. Mitchell. The young ladies down there, primarily young black females are alleging harassment, intimidation, stalking. Even the police department, Bradenton Police Department, made a comment, one of the investigators that was down there doing some work, when one of the girls called the police and said that he was going to report Mr. Mitchell to the mayor. He's costing us a lot of money in litigation costs, taxpayers' dollars, because now he's currently being sued. It looks like five other employees that have been fired are now lining up to do the same thing. So you got declining conditions down there, it's not getting better. And so we actually need to do something, and we're seeking to have him removed. He's a black guy, I don't care whether he's black, white, green, or purple. We're expecting people to do the right thing. And he's had two years, he's a $165,000 a year employee. And we're a partnering company, and my employees and my partners have had to call the police on a $165,000 a year employee that's there at the will of the city of Bradenton, and that we need to have some things done. So I appreciate you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Rodney.
All right, any other citizen comment? One, yes ma'am, come up, please. And please state your name and...
Joanne Spencer, 1105 Sixth Street East in Bradenton. And I was asked to come here. I've been working in the community a long time. I'm on several committees here. I'm on the Bradenton Police Advisory Board. I'm on the Keep Manatee Beautiful Board. And what I want to say is, I love Bradenton, and we want to make it a better place, whatever deficiencies we have in it. And we, I'm going to talk with Jennifer, that we got to clean up our community. I live in the Washington Park area, down there where you're building the Lincoln Village, and people are coming to me. And I thank for the information I called up here to find out what's going on with that. I don't know everything, but some people think because I'm involved. So we try to keep up with every thing that's going on and involve the people. So I came up here and just want to say, we have a new board, and we're looking for great things from you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll close the public, our citizen comment, and Mrs. Bochamp?
Yes, sir, next we have the consent agenda. We are asking approval today for items A through F and H through M. As you're aware, we had to pull item G. It was removed for consideration by the CRA board at the next meeting that they choose to bring that forward.
All right, is there any comment?
Mr. Brown, I'd like to pull item J for discussion.
Okay, so we pull item J.
So move, move to consent, move to approve the consent agenda, A through F, H and I, K, L, and M.
Second.
Any further discussion? Your motion, we'll start in Ward Two.
No.
Ward Two?
Oh, Ward Two, yes, sorry.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Carries unanimously, A through F, H and I, K, L, and M. So, all right, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I just want to point out where it's, this was the event approval for the grand parade, which it says in the applicant, it says, "We sincerely appreciate your help in moving this through the channels. We ask that you keep your fingers crossed along with that COVID-19 precautions, vaccinations are in place to ensure a safe event." And I just want to point out that's in there, because right now, watching this, where we are in a national health issue and pandemic, we're expecting a big spike right now, that we don't know what that's going to amount to. But I've been told that through March is going to be very dangerous. Vaccinations are not rolling out at a rate that I would hope that they would be. So, you know, it is going to have to be determined whether having a large gathering in the streets, you know, that we're going to authorize, is going to be safe. And then I just want to remind everyone that the main purpose for municipal government is public safety, so...
And I think, I'll just, I'll comment a little bit on some of it that I've heard so far, that what the Heritage Festival's doing is trying to, and they can speak to it some too if they want, but bring it to us, get it on here, get it approved, pending what happens as we go forward. They are going to be very cautious, they're not going to take any chances, because we have numerous city staff that work it. And, you know, hopefully, if the vaccinations get out, things start to calm down a little bit. We don't want to be behind the eight ball at the last minute and not be able to do it. So plan like it's going forward, but if it gets closer, then they would come back and say, "We're going to pull it," and in conjunction with the city and work with us. So I think if that's anybody wants to say, or is that pretty much what you're thinking? You know, I mean, because again, I'm confident that if something doesn't change, it will be canceled for the safety.
The main purpose, I just, right, I wanted to pull this was that I did not want to read in a newspaper that we approved the parade without consideration for a public health issue.
Yes.
I'm ready to approve it.
Let them confirm that, and then we'll be able to...
Yep, the other thing, you've got to go through the DOT processes, and those are, those take a while. So that's really...
And that's what we're asking for. Len Horn, 1629 First Avenue East. Thank you for bringing it up. And that's what we want you to know, is it's a process. Y'all are our first stop. We need you to agree to letting us go forward. We will gladly cancel again this year, but we have to go through the steps. You're our first, then the county, then the DOT. That's what we're asking. We're not going to shove it down. Yeah, you told us we could do it. Not for public safety.
No, and I wasn't saying you do that. What, I just didn't want some, I just didn't want to read in a newspaper that we approved a parade without considerations.
Right. And that's, and that's all we're asking. So we can go forward, and I promise you, as president of the Historical Society, I will not do anything to endanger our people, your people.
Yeah.
And I think what the history of what you have done for our community, and obviously, last year, you know, we wanted to have it, but we shouldn't have had it, and we didn't have it, and you guys did a great job. And again, what you do for our community for the underprivileged, the underserved, and donating back has hurt a little bit that we haven't had those. But we appreciate it from the city's standpoint over all the years. And like you said, I agree with Mr. Roth. It's better to talk about that, so it's not like, we're just not willy-nilly approving something, and then can't pull back. It's going to be in conjunction with all of us to make sure we do it right. And I know your talks are, probably the number one people you have is the police department there, all the police departments in the county. But, you know, hopefully, some things will start to go down. I noticed that the levels did go down the last few days in our area, but we're hoping not for another spike. And the vaccine's out, you know, we can only hope. And a lot of people, and I'm going to say this right now, just because I'm getting a lot of emails about people not being able to get vaccines, shots. But this body doesn't control that. We can advocate for it, and we are. But hopefully, we can get hundreds of millions of shots out and start helping people, so...
We just want you to know, we are looking out for this. We're not trying to en-run anything. We want to be upfront, and that's why we wanted to come and talk to you.
And we totally believe and understand that, so thank you, Mr. Roth.
Thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make the motion to approve our part of the DeSoto Heritage Festival Grand Parade, with the understanding that public safety trumps everything, and that the Heritage Festival completely understands that, has worked with us in the past, and will continue to work with us to promote public safety.
Thank you.
With fingers, okay.
With fingers crossed.
All right, any further discussion? Start voting in Ward Three?
Yes.
Four, excuse me, Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Carries unanimously, thank you. All right, Mrs. Bochamp?
Yes, next, under Business Advertising Petitions Hearings and Communications, we have Vicki White with the Housing and Community Development Department, bringing forward Resolution 21-6, which is a public hearing today. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending the City of Bradenton's CDBG 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan COVID-19 Relief Program, and providing an effective date.
This is a public hearing on the use of our CDBG funds. The issue with this budget adjustment is to try to move monies where they are not being currently spent to the levels that we think that they could be, to places that are truly utilizing those funds. And in this instance, that's away from mortgage assistance and utility assistance to the Meals on Wheels, which is going gangbusters to be able to spend money. It sounds like it's a, it could be a bad move. You're taking money out of mortgage assistance and whatever. There's still $120,000 left in mortgage assistance. We've currently utilized a little over $13,000 for that. And what I want to make sure everybody understands is with this, if you were watching Manatee County's meeting yesterday, the real important, not for that reason, the real important part of these programs rolling forward with CARES Act and COVID things is that they are fixing to roll out the new program for rental assistance and utilities, which is, you know, a big issue for us, that we will be trying to coordinate. We're going to get their packets, try to have people that are working exactly with Manatee County to see that those people who are in need now have two avenues. Still have money left in the mortgage assistance and utility help from us, but also have help from the residential side, the rental side, for the same type program. But there's income restrictions and things. And the only thing that we can stress on that, and it's not entirely due to our resolution, but, you know, one of the things people, they don't want to procrastinate on their taxes this year if they're in a low-income situation, because the easiest way to get through these federal programs is have done your tax returns and show that low level of income. That makes it almost automatic, so, and it's the 2020 return. So it's really critical that people start thinking about that when they're looking for the assistance. And there is a lot of assistance that's out there. We've tried hard to get it out there, we will try even harder to get it out there. I've asked Vicki to come up with some additional outreach programs besides our just utility bills to try to make these things happen. Even if we have to target certain folks that we know are having problems, to show them that they could qualify, and it's not a daunting process. It's not a stigma during the issue that we've had with, to come to us for help. A lot of people resist coming to us for help. There's no reason to resist coming to us for help. That's why it's there, that's why the government is putting it out there to try to help the folks.
Could I expand a little?
You sure may.
Okay. All right, with this CDBG funding, I mean, regular CDBG funding and CARES Act funding, you can't have money just laying around doing nothing. I did put out a request for applications. I got some the first round from Meals on Wheels and Turning Points and Salvation Army, no, not Salvation Army, the first round. Meals on Wheels and Turning Points. Meals on Wheels was doing the meals, and Turning Points was doing rental assistance. So that left quite a bit of money to go someplace. So I put it into mortgage assistance, because you can't have it just laying around. So when the second round of CARES Act funding came through CDBG, I put out another request. In that request, Salvation Army asked for funding, $50,000 for rental assistance. Turning Points asked for $125,000. That still left a little bit of money that was not obligated to anything. You can't have it laying around. So I put it into mortgage assistance with the understanding that if these other activities, rental assistance and meals, need additional funding, we can reprogram the money. So right now, in addition to the mortgage assistance, Turning Points, I think they have like $18,000 left of their first round of rental assistance. And Salvation Army, no, no, they will be, they will be receiving $50,000. And Turning Points will be getting $125,000 out of the second round.
Okay, any questions?
I comment. Vicki, please stick around the meeting, because I'm going to have a question on CDBG for the next item. But I don't have any issue moving forward on this one.
Oh, okay.
All right, I just have one question, Vicki, or maybe a comment. As we go through this CARES Act money, obviously, we're getting some. The county's getting a bigger portion because of the size of the county. If somebody calls you and asks if, and we can't help them with some sort of CARES money, are we sending them to the county part of it? Because they are still eligible, even though they live in the city, for county money also, whether it's a business. And from what I understand, the county still has some money left over too, in the millions. So, but people, I've had a few people talk to me that I've hooked them up with the county commissioner or that, but they don't, people aren't sure, well, I live in, I'm in the city, my business is in the city, can I get it? Yes. So are we, we are helping them if they, something comes to us that we can't help to pull forward them on?
We are, we are helping. Vicki's, obviously, primary focus is CDBG, not strictly just CARES. So what we do is try to direct them to the right place, as best we can. One of the things that we had troubles with early on was making sure that the county in their CARES Act programs identified that it was all of Manatee County, not just incorporated Manatee County, so that there wasn't that misunderstanding. Now, is there some duplic, I want to say duplication, not necessarily duplication, because a lot of times, there's different qualifications for being able to utilize a program. You may not qualify for one, you may be able to get into two others. But I'm certainly proud of Vicki today. I asked her to come forward. I know she's a reluctant speaker most of the time, and that's fine. But I said, "Hey, be prepared with the details," and she's prepared with the details.
And we appreciate that.
Always does a great job speaking, so, thank you. So we need a motion to...
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion.
We need a public hearing, sir.
Oh, it's a public hearing, that's right. Sorry.
All right, yep.
Trying to get too efficient here, our government, we get in trouble.
We're going to open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Anyone wish to speak? For or against, or just speak in general? Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be happy to move for approval of Resolution 21-6, CDBG-CB substantial amendment.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote. Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Thank you, carries unanimously. Ms. Bochamp?
Yes, next, under New Business, we have Attorney Rudisil with the selection of a litigation representative to participate in an upcoming mediation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in the City of Bradenton versus Snyder case, which I believe the counsel is familiar with. There is a mediation scheduled for next week. A second, that is... 9:30 in the morning on February 2nd, which is next Tuesday. And so I am asking for the... And so, I am asking for the council to appoint one of the council members to attend that, that mediation with me and serve as the, as the representative. The litigation representative will not have authority to enter into any type of settlement on behalf of the city. That would come back to the full council. So, essentially, they're just there to, to serve as the representative, and they can, they can support a, a potential resolution if there is one and bring that back.
Is there any Ward Three volunteer that would like to do that?
Well, I think, I think, not that I'm anxious to go to court on anything, but I, I certainly would be the obvious choice for that, so.
And the reason being, obviously, he's been through it all.
Yeah.
It's his ward, and he understands it totally, so the council.
So, mediation, let me ask you, where, where does that take place and what, I've never done this before, what?
So, this is going to be a little bit unique because it's going to be a mediation by Zoom. So, you can either, either we can send you the link. I'll get with you after the meeting. We can talk about whether you want to come in the office or, or just do it from your home or from the office here.
And then, so this is just, this is just only these parties, correct?
Correct.
Because I know that there are, I get calls from the Point Pleasant people all the time, so this is good that we're moving forward, but they would not be able to attend this.
That's correct.
Okay, just checking.
And we need a motion to approve Mr. Roth as being the representative for mediation with Mr. Rudisil?
I'll make that motion.
Well, I'm not going to make that motion.
I'll make it. Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Should I abstain?
Yes, and four, or five, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Carrie's unanimously. I guess then we're back up to Mrs. Beauchamp?
Yes, sir. Also, under Attorney Rudisil's business, we have a request for CDBG rehabilitation lien release, which is Resolution 21-9. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton, Florida, approving the payoff of CDBG loan 568 for $10,000 and providing an effective date.
All right, comments?
Just, certainly Scott can, can go through the details of why we would take a $10,000 amount. Certainly, just to remind the, the new members or new members know how CDBG loans work. If you go in and do mitigation work in a house, help a house out, roofs, windows, things, whatever, where we would do work on a house, we then put a lien on the property that is a forgivable lien as over the course of years. It decreases over the number of years. I believe it is fif, is it 15, Vicki?
Yes, this one.
This is 15 years. So, over time, if, if you did everything you were supposed to and, and nothing happened bad with the property and whatever else, after 15 years, the loan is forgiven. Well, in this instance, there's a few more issues going on which Mr. Rudisil can probably get into. I just wanted to know, the normal, the normal course is it runs its timeout, the lien is forgiven, and it, and it works great.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that I have the, the background as to what's going on with the, with the property owner, other than the fact that the property is currently in foreclosure. It's my understanding there's also a bankruptcy action that's underway. So, it, it's our assumption that if the foreclosure proceeds, that, that the city's CDBG lien will be, will be wiped out. So, there's, there's apparently a buyer who is working on trying to acquire the property via short sale, and they're the ones who have asked if, if the city would reduce that lien amount in order to try to get the short sale through. You have a question, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, well, my question, so I can see, I can see what's happening, and I, my, and this is why I asked Vicki to stick around. These are federal funds, community development block grant funds that we got from the feds, and we're going to now work with. And I have no problem, you know, helping distressed property, avoid foreclosure and all that stuff. But are we putting ourselves in any peril with the community, with, with, with the fed over, you know, letting go funds that we received and put into a loan and then we're forgiving amounts?
No, I think the thing is, what, the proceeds from this would go back into CDBG funding. It doesn't come to us or anything else. It goes back to continue the programs.
And ultimately, this will hopefully get a house out of foreclosure and fixed up.
What we hope is that we have a, a very willing buyer who can bring the house back to, you know, and do some work on it and, and make sure it becomes a very productive member of society in a, in a very critical neighborhood for us.
Mr.?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Councilman Barnaby?
I'm just trying to understand, so let me just talk through this, and if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, you can just nod at me, and that'll, that'll suffice. So, the lien is a 15-year lien starting in 2014.
Yeah.
And in, in 15 years from that, it would have been, it would have been completely forgiven. We're getting half a loaf rather than none. I'll take a half a loaf all day long rather than nothing.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, there appeared to me there might have been someone in the audience that wanted to speak to it.
Something come up? If there's, just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Detwiler, 5607 Fifth Terrace Northwest, and myself and my wife are the buyers of the, hopefully, of the property. We lived in Bradenton all our lives. We grew up here. We're looking to, it's the Village of the Arts area, and we're looking to open an art gallery there and improve the property. We've secured financing. We've been under contract since October. We've secured financing, but the appraisal that we got with the financing puts us at a deficit of 20 grand. So, we wouldn't be able to move forward with the financing, the deal would fall through. That's the reason why my wife and I reached out to Vicki, to try to get this lien under the threshold of the appraisal, so we can be able to move forward with the financing. And we're anxious to get going and to help the area.
And we appreciate it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right.
Good comments? All right, do I hear a motion?
Yes, request for the Community Development Block Grant Rehabilitation lien Release, Resolution 21-9 for property at 1214 12th Avenue West.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? We'll start the voting in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion, Carrie.
All right, Mrs. Beauchamp?
We have no unfinished business.
Okay, and we'll start council reports in Ward Two.
I would like to thank all of the citizens and city officials, Braden Police Department and the representatives from Kembley Horn that came to our socially-distanced outside mask-wearing party at Lewis Park to talk about what the neighborhood would like to see as far as improvements and changes to the park. We know we will be doing work on what is called the tot lot. And if we are, we, the tot lot, the, the area that is enclosed by a small fence so that, you know, there's nothing, nothing moves faster than a toddler with the wrong thing in their mouth. So, having fencing around, it makes it easier for mom or dad or grandma or babysitter, whomever, to make sure that they can get to that child quickly without chasing them through the entire perimeter of Lewis Park. The tot lot is going to have work done on it, very similar to what was done at Glacier Gates. We are looking at making the park ADA compliant as well. And it was a very good meeting last, yesterday afternoon. About 40 people were there. The mayor was there, I was there, properly noticed meeting. And I'm looking forward to see what, what we are able to come up with there. We had a lot of comments from the residents there. Also, at this time, I would like to send my deepest sympathies again to the family of Nancy and Kim McGowan, our former officer, and the parent, parents of one of our current officers. Their service was held on Saturday, and it was a beautiful service. Again, socially distant morning, which is kind of a very strange thing to do to me from being raised in the southern traditions and, and everyone had masks on. I have not been attending my church. I've been, you know, we were doing it over the internet. Trying to sing with a mask on was very difficult for me. So, but anyway, just thoughts and prayers out to the entire McGowan family. To lose your parents 16 minutes apart because of COVID is something almost too difficult to comprehend and to bear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Roth?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to give a report for, this is not a CRA meeting, but we were going to have a CRA meeting following this one regularly scheduled. Due to COVID precautions, and then our regularly scheduled meeting will now be moved, we're having a special meeting on February 10th. Then the special meeting is going to be for the, the meeting dates, but also mainly to talk about the TIF for the newly, the new workforce housing on. Now, also, by pushing this off for the reason of COVID, we're also helping comply with Mr. Sanders' request that we wait until he returns from his business trip. At this time, we will have a regularly scheduled meeting for February 24th. I've been in contact, constant contact with our staff and our executive director. She has much to report on the activities that she's been looking at, the budgeting, planning ahead, and making sure that all our current reports are, you know, being filed and it's basically just getting caught up. She inherited the budget that the previous council approved in October of last year. So, there's kind of a transition going on. I know she's been working with Mr. Callahan and Sharon on making sure that all the ducks are in order and everything like that. So, much, much has been happening. I've been trying to pop in with Karen every day, and, and, you know, if you please feel free to do that as well. That's our lone employee right now for the time being. And then also, that Katerina is going to be contacting each and every one of you just to, just for a personal one-on-one update. So, just FYI.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Councilwoman Coachman?
Well, I can only say good things right now. Of course, I've not been a council member for a month, but all the things that I ran on as a platform are definitely in the works. I want to definitely build more communication between the citizens, especially Ward Five, because they seem to feel like we're not really paying them close attention. But I can definitely say that our police department is paying attention. I've seen officers walking the beat. I've seen more patrolling, and I don't know if it's just because I've been looking out my window more, it's probably been doing it all the time. But we're just really, in Ward Five, looking forward to being just as great as all parts of the city, because the city is definitely great. I really don't have a whole lot more to say for now, but I'm sure in time.
Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Coach?
Well, just hitting the ground running, it's, I, I was invited to go to the Village Green Homeowners Association, their annual meeting, and it was a great way to kind of hear directly from, you know, your ward. And I, I'd like to find out if there's a way to, some of those neighborhoods have, their HOAs have expired, but I didn't know if there was any way to informally reach out to them, because they seem to want to make improvements, and, and some of their entrances are so visible, it'd be a great, a great way to help improve the visibility on some of the gateways. And just because they don't have an HOA, so I don't know if there's any way to, to work towards that end, but I'd like to see that. And I also would like to thank everybody. There were several comments, and everybody I've reached out to with staff has just been beyond helpful, and, and being new, that makes me look better. So, and I also want to thank the mayor. I think the meetings are running very smoothly, and I like the decorum here and the changes that you've made. So, thank you for that, and go Bucks!
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby.
I just wanted to share, many of the neighborhoods in Ward Two do not have, were older historic neighborhoods, there are not homeowners associations.
Mm-hmm.
But I have been able, we have done things in the past where they've gotten together. Sometimes they will kind of collect a fund amongst, you know, go door-to-door, and, and people put in money into the kitty to be able to purchase some additional plants. We've in the past worked with the Public Works Department to assist us with median upkeep and, and, you know, giving us a technical assistance on some of those things. So, just because there's not a homeowners association per se, doesn't, doesn't mean that we're not able to reach out to them as well. So, and, and my experience in the past.
Yeah, it's just finding that point person.
Councilman Roth?
Yeah, also, Manatee County Government has a neighborhood services division, and they quite often will do just what you're saying, is that they'll, all they need to do is just have a group of people that were willing to call themselves a neighborhood group, even though the HOA is non-existent. They can just work together as individuals, and they will probably be able to get at least half of the updates or changes or whatever out of the county funds, because city residents also pay county taxes.
Yeah. Mr. Callahan?
And then also, check with our Public Works Director, Jim, and probably the best thing I'd say at first is get some history about those medians and entrances, because there's a lot of history from the HOA there, but Jim would be able to give you probably a little bit of the history of what we've done and how some of those things work, because there's been some things done, and, and obviously, the history would make a difference in how you address when you're talking to them. Yes. All right, Mr. Callahan?
I just wanted to follow up Ms. Barnaby's comment about the meeting at Lewis Park last night. Because Mr. Gallow is here, and he's still here, I wanted to say, I was very interested in that meeting last night to see what the comments were about the ball field, because I hadn't heard much. And I just want Mr. Gallow to know that the comments were very positive about having the ball field there. So, good job for, at the end of his tenure, of bringing that back and for Public Works to put it in. And I was, didn't, didn't even know how it was going over, and the neighborhood was very thankful that it was there.
And they're utilizing it, as we talked about, for kickball and even tee ball and some of the, some of the things going on.
And practices of teams and...
Yeah, teams, and so that's, that's what we want there at that park. And that was, my comments started, I was with Lewis Park. It was great to see that many people there, even though there was a little bit of excitement and some of us that were at that meeting need to realize that we have differences and a lot of 30-year-plus residents there, me included when I was living there, and of course, Mrs. Barnaby. But change is, is for the good at some point, but it's still going to be the neighborhood park. So, I hope the, and I've already got emails this morning from residents thanking us, giving their opinion, and then we'll forward that on to the committee that, and then who come to the council to approve once that plan is done. And then want to thank the whole council yesterday, as well as the staff. The meeting, the workshop we had yesterday, I think was very informative. Every person did a great job at speaking, and I think it hopefully understands, gives a little bit more knowledge out there, gives us a little bit more knowledge. Went a little longer than I had thought, but I don't, I'm not saying that in a bad way, because it was good information, and that was the most important thing to get out there. And as we said, it's going to be very important for us to know that we are actually getting the true information out, so we can then work as a community to make it better for all of us. If the true information is out, and you may not exactly like how something's going, but at least you know the facts, and we're going to work forward from that. And then obviously, everybody got the memo but me, not to wear a Bucks jersey, but we tried. It was short notice. The Bucks, the Bucks surprised us, and nobody could find a jersey. I was 9:30, I was at my friend's house last night.
I read it black right here.
Yeah, we all got our colors on, but I was at 9:30 over in northwest Braden and banging on my friend's door, "You got a jersey?" He goes, "I only got a John Lynch." I said, "I'll take it." So, obviously, we're excited about the Bucks, and, and last time this council celebrated, they won, so let's pull it out again for our community. It'd be huge. So, go Bucks, and, and again, thanks to all the staff. And we, we will continue to do things correctly and open government and for the good of the people. Thank you. Sharon?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Chief? Chief?
Speaking of Bucks, very quickly, if you have had an opportunity to see our Facebook post from last night, we already have 3,000 views. It's already gotten picked up. gotten picked up by, uh, media outlets. Um, you know, that is not only a reflection on the agency, I think it's a reflection on us. So we are, uh, we're already in a lot of competition this morning and we've got a new one planned for later on this afternoon. So you may even be involved, because you're the only one here who has a, a Bucks jersey. So, uh, just real quick, um, a couple things I wanted to note. Uh, um, you know, Mr. Brown, Mayor Brown, had, uh, called me well in advance of him becoming mayor to do what a lot of people do, which is complain about the traffic. Um, I'm not saying we ignored it, but on the day he became my boss, I took it a little bit more seriously. Um, I'm teasing about that. So, uh, actually, um, that same week, we again, um, sent some folks out and, and really just did a little bit of, of standing there and watching and, um, doing some research. Um, basically having my cops out there standing on a corner. What we saw, one of the issues downtown, was at Ninth Street West and Sixth Avenue West, it was different than it always had been. We made a phone call to FDOT. What we learned is that there's some planned construction that's going to be going on, and they just decided to get a jump on things months ahead of time and had changed the light cycle. Uh, we said, "Hey, how about not doing that till we're ready to actually do that construction?" They agreed and, uh, they were able to change it back. Um, so I don't know if you've seen any relief. We have a bit. And so sometimes it's just that extra shove. So thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and really just standing out there and watching and observing. We're doing that right now with a few other intersections that I'm sure you all sit there at them and say, "Boy, this just, this doesn't make sense." Um, we see the same thing. We're trying. You heard yesterday, we do have a, um, a traffic group and we do a lot through them, but some of the things we can usually do a little bit more expediently if we show that there's a, a, a public safety issue. So always bring me that information, particularly when you're sitting there. You're also going to see some increased, um, activities on our part with blocking the box. Um, tis the season again and it's gotten worse and worse. Um, we, we have a zero tolerance for that. You're gonna, we're trying to get some more signs out there. But again, that has to go through FDOT and it can be, um, a little time-consuming. My promise to you, and this was again, Mayor Brown who encouraged it, was to always report on something good if I have it. I always have something good to report. Yesterday, one of my brand-new officers, he's only been on the street for a couple months, came across a vehicle, um, idling right in the middle of the roadway at the 600 block of 14th Street, um, in Ward Five. Got out, found a driver unresponsive. Um, we let them carry Narcan. He administered Narcan. It wasn't it. He was having a heart attack. Um, he was not breathing. My officer sat there for several minutes, did CPR. Uh, BFD came to the rescue. They were able to get a pulse. Um, so far, we've saved his life. Hopefully that progress will continue. Um, these kind of things happen all the time. Y'all just don't hear about it. I'm going to make it a point to make sure y'all hear about it. We're out there saving lives. Um, finally, th, this is kind of late, um, but I just wanted to point this out to you. Um, Mayor Brown, again, um, was at the, um, Crime Stoppers Annual Dinner here a couple weeks ago. I was out of town. And I was very pleased, I didn't know about it in advance, that my explorer group that is managed by Valerie Knight, as well as her husband and five other BPD officers, were awarded, it was very surprising, the 2020 Chief Al Hoagel Law Enforcement Award. Uh, that's presented by Crime Stoppers for really going the extra mile. You'll know that Al Hoagel was the chief of police here long ago, back in, I think, 2001, and he passed away in 2012 with a motorcycle accident. Um, these kids and my volunteer officers, and I remind you that it's volunteer, I'm not paying them for their time out there. Um, I think we had 13 in all, sat out there and handed out candy, um, to thousands of children on Halloween night. Um, we're all home with our families, doing our own thing. It's, Halloween's kind of fun to stay home. They all put that aside and did that. Um, again, I think Councilwoman Barnaby will tell you that, that same group was out at the fairgrounds, um, volunteering once again, um, to help do some things out there for the Crime Stoppers booth. So I just wanted to point that out. I didn't have them all come in today, um, but I'm very proud of them. I'm proud of our explorers. Um, I'm proud of the volunteerism of our youth and, and certainly our, um, managers and personnel who helped move that along. And so that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And I, at that Crime Stoppers, um, Halloween party, it's one thing that they've done a great job and through Frank Bruner over the years, uh, as their executive director and their board. Um, we got there early, thank goodness, because they actually ended up running out of candy, serving thousands of kids where it gave a positive, safe place to go. And you had a lot of different departments there, but, uh, Brayden Police Department had the, the biggest and the best and really put out the presence to show the community that we're here to support the children and, and get them to understand it. But it was great to see an event that could be safe with a lot of people at the fairground. And through these COVID times, we need positives. And that was great. And that was a great, accepting that honor on your behalf that night. So, thank you, Chief.
Sir.
All right, Jim?
Uh, yes, just real quick, uh, you'll have in your inbox our weekly report when you get back to your offices. Um, one thing that is, that I realized I neglected to put in there, uh, specifically for Ward Five. In the past, at a number of council meetings, uh, Mr. Wooton had come up and talked about 19th Street Court East. We have a project that's in design right now that will add on-street parking by pushing the curb back on the east side of the road, uh, excuse me, the west side of the road, uh, that will hopefully produce about 15 parking spots along that roadway. And so, uh, once we get this into final design, we'll have it go forward. And, and so it will be part of this year's capital improvement, just so you're aware.
I'll let him know.
Thank you.
Okay. And outside, outside your window now, you'll, uh, at your home, you'll probably see that we have taken down the banners at the banner tower on the Riverwalk. We're in the process of having a structural evaluation done before we make repairs to it. Uh, we'll be, uh, repainting the whole unit and hopefully getting some new banners for it as well.
And, and one thing, we talked about Lewis Park, but we also are going through an evaluation of all of our parks now.
Yes.
And we're going to be doing projects at all of them as the time goes on.
Correct.
Sooner than later, obviously. I know that's coming. So it's a good thing.
Mr. Mayor, I neglected during my report, I need to write everything down. I'm forgetting things. Um, I have heard nothing but raves about the new sidewalks that are going in along 26th Street. Everyone is very happy with them. Um, there are a lot of people in my neighborhood that have, have pets. They walk pets. They push strollers. They push, um, elderly people in wheelchairs. And this just makes it so much smoother for them. People are very, very happy.
Glad to hear.
Thank you. Yes, Chief?
All right, I forgot to mention one thing. I made a note for myself on your comment. I just wanted to make sure that all the councils were annually, um, and, and you're familiar with it, um, we have a program grant, um, opening for our forfeiture seizure funds. And I, I am restricted in those dollars, uh, but primarily what they want me to give it towards is, um, crime reduction and safety within our neighborhoods. That's one of the, the line items. And so we're not as restrictive as some programs, because I administer it. Um, and what we want to see and what we'd love to see is neighborhoods, not necessarily neighborhood associations, but if we can show that it's a neighborhood and they're going to put that money to good use, um, we're more than willing to make some donations towards that cause. I know this last cycle, Councilwoman Barnaby identified a, a nonprofit and we were able to provide them some, some necessary funding. But I've seen in, in, um, the years I've been doing this, even before I got here, things such as, um, crime watch signs, um, SEP TED-type initiatives within the neighborhood, which means if we need to, you know, um, plant some different things or provide additional lighting, um, we can do that. So I want, I want everybody to keep that in mind. Obviously, we can't do everything one year, but if we, um, see that there's a need, we, we do have funding and we like those smaller projects, particularly so that we can help with them. And so please keep that in mind. I'll make sure that when the opening comes, I remind you, you'll always see it on our Facebook, but we'll certainly let, let you know all that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Callahan?
Uh, the only thing, I want to thank council and certainly Mr. Brown for, for bringing up the information about, facts do matter. They do matter a lot in all of these circumstances. And, you know, sometimes they'll go against you. Sometimes you don't, you're not making the decision that you, you would hope to be able to make. And, and, um, I know that staff takes their job seriously about noticing, um, making sure you have all the information you need, um, to, to try to do that. And I, I'm hoping that, um, that we're, we're making progress in that way, that it is just difficult sometimes. I'll apologize for me. You know, I, I get, um, I hate seeing people just beat up for no reason when, when it is just flat out not truth put out there. And, and we're almost defenseless. As public employees, we're expected to put our hands behind our back and just sit there and say, "Thank you, sir. May I have another?" And I just don't, I don't believe in that. I think that when, when the public understands what the facts are, there'll be certainly more understanding. Uh, and, and that's what we strive to do. So I, I appreciate you and, and I appreciate the staff for trying to make sure that can happen. And not everyone in the neighborhood is happy, because now I'll have to pay for my knees when I trip and fall. Walking my dog at night.
Mr. Roth?
Uh, you know, I, I read in the newspaper last week, um, about a, a local elected official on a, on a different board who was complaining about, uh, comments and said that, uh, that when he ran for office, he didn't, um, uh, basically something to the extent of, uh, didn't give up his right to, to, you know, to, I forget his exact way he's, the way he said it was, but basically, "You're not allowed to just criticize me." And it's like, well, I guess he didn't realize what he signed up for, because that's exactly what you do give. But you give up your right as a human being when you run for office. You're no longer entitled to all the civil liberties that you were before you took the oath. So...
All right. One final comment for me, and I know it kind of surprised Mrs. Barnaby when I started in Ward Two, but I always took what Mr. Byrd said, that he was always last. So I decided that we are going to rotate. So every, the third meeting will start with Ward Three and Four. So that way, nobody's ever last, you know, all the time. So I thought that was very, very important to be...
I think that's wonderful. I was just, I was just shocked. I was like...
Well, we got used to something for so long, history. But no, but again, that's, that's one of the things that, you know, it just makes it nicer. So then, always, Mrs. Coachman won't always have every comment taken. So you'll be first in a couple weeks. So, thank you. And, uh, anything else for the good of the order? And, and I hope that we...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Would, would our P I. like to get us and all of our, our red and blacks supporting the Bucks as a group picture possibly?
Perfect, yep.
I think that would be nice.
Maybe Ryan would have something positive to say about a council meeting in the community. We're adjourned.[1766.36][1766.36][laughter]